Seventh, and that's clearly visible from our rear yard. So, I mean, with that being said, we just want to point out that that analysis, just on its own, confirms the structure in question does conform to the group of neighboring structures, but also identifies the variations within the neighborhood. And I know you've heard the argument briefly before, but, and I'll jump right into the rezoning with this. The area that was rezoned from R5 to R4-1 is 2 and 1/2 blocks minus 100 feet from 13th Avenue. So, we're talking about a handful of houses here. And within that 2 and 1/2 blocks, we have a community facility that eats up a half of a block directly in front of us. We have a school. We have a church behind us. It's not, and just discussing the three different periods these houses were built in, there's a variation to begin with. So, to put your finger on one characteristic of the neighborhood is impossible.
Right. No. Ideally, no neighborhood has one characteristic.
Right.
That would be sad.
And to add to that, the extent, we discussed the extent, let's talk about the proximity of that zone change. Our rear lot line is a zoning boundary. Just beyond this is R5B. Just up the block, it's R6, I believe, R6 something, I don't know. But, and up the block, we have a 6 to 12 family structure that just went up, a multifamily dwelling that was built by a developer. And this is from the New York City Planning website. "The intent of the rezoning was to limit developers from continuing to build large, out-of-scale multifamily buildings in neighborhoods with predominantly 1-2 family homes." So, I just don't see how the rezoned area, given its limitations, you know, efficiently or effectively executes what it was intended to do. I mean, it's really harming the people that it was trying to protect. We're trying to protect the 1-2 family homeowners, these small families, which this owner is. And, in fact, we're making it more difficult for them to complete a project that they started years be, well, not years, years ago, but months before the zoning re-change, to which they had no knowledge of.
Well, that's the nature of a rezoning, that you're supposed to, that the architect is supposed to be paying attention to the zoning, and so unfortunately, it's Buildings Department.
Yes.
And so, not give you a permit when the zoning's changed.
The zoning's changed, and everyone's gone, and out of the picture. No one's assuming responsibility, and it's the burden of the owner to make amends.
Yes. Caught, is what they did. Okay. Okay. Any other comments about that subject? Is there anything else you wanted to add about this? Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? I really do appreciate your careful study of the questions, and you doing it so quickly that you're ready to come here. So, you know what two main subjects you really have to deal with? Did we have anything else to add with that? Perimeter wall height and the obstruction in the front?
Right. But, even so, regarding the construction in the front, in order to, for them not to have to demolish it, wouldn't it require a variance?
Well, that's a different application, so we, maybe they talk about, this isn't a variance, right? This is a 622.
It's a special permit, too.
Right. So, that's the thing, is if you...
I don't know if you can tell, but we're firmly in need of this process.
You did a pretty good job. Yeah, very, yeah, very good job. This is difficult.
This is one of the worst.
If it's a variance, we'll file a variance. If it's not going to end here as a special permit, then we'll pursue a variance.
Okay. So, what I'd suggest you do is you have a project manager that you're working with?
No, I am the owner's son, a registered architect in New York, and she's the owner's daughter.
Oh, wow.
We grew up in that house.
Good team. You're, you know, open a business.
There's no guarantee that a variance would be successful either.
So, what I would suggest you do...
But, we don't want to lose this particular application, because as you're well aware, you know, it's only grandfathered up to us. If we withdraw this application, we can't bring it back.
Right. Well, you wouldn't have to withdraw the application. Often, we have these travel simultaneously, both the special permit and a variance travel simultaneously, because the idea of a variance is, we want to handle the minimum variance necessary to grant relief. And in this case, the only one so far, unless you don't persuade us about perimeter wall height, is the front yard incursion, right? So, what I would suggest you do is, do you have Ryan Singer's contact information? He'll give it to you, and you should call him and set up a meeting with staff to talk about what a variance application is and what you would have to prove, because I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure how, what the findings are here.
So, you thought that they need to make sure the perimeter wall issue...
No, we continue with this. Yes. So, you're going to continue with responding to this?
Sure.
And if there, you know, it's not 100% sure, or even, I don't know which percent sure, that a variance application would work here. So, if you can think of sort of good architectural solutions, or a good argument at the Department of Buildings, that I would recommend that, just because I don't really know about the variance. But, you should meet them, meet with them, and discuss it, okay? But, in the meantime, you're continuing with this to deal with both subjects, perimeter wall and the front, okay?
Okay. So, just an elevation, indicating the elevation of the adjacent structure to identify perimeter wall height?
It's not just to identi, you're making an argument that you should be able to rely on perimeter wall height, and we're saying the one to the right, because it's sitting on the same hill, so it should have the same base plane, more or less, right? So, that's the side that would make the argument easier for you to...
Yes.
And that perimeter wall is where, is just where the roof starts.
I understand. Where it starts the pitch. I understand. But, the way that section is written, talking about height and setbacks, it identifies it as an extension of the perimeter wall. That's why I brought it up.
Okay. Okay. That's an interesting argument. That's a whole other subject, but you've launched a career at the BSA. Okay. Okay. So, let's, how much time do you think you need to...
As soon as possible.
Okay. So, what is our soonest possible? I think it's July, though, at the very least.
Yeah. July 18 on this one?
Okay. July 18, which would mean you submit June 28. Okay? And if you have any questions, Tony will, Tony at the end will give you Ryan's phone number. We have it. She has it. Oh, you have it. Okay. And your project manager's Henry.
I'm sorry to drag this out longer, but one more question. Would revocable consent eliminate the need to legalize with the DOB or anything like that, the front yard enlargement?
So, if you've got an existing historical staircase and garden and all of that on city property, I believe you're grandfathered and shouldn't, revocable consent is to allow you to have like a staircase on city property.
I gotcha. Yeah, I understand.
Right? So, I don't think you actually...
It doesn't apply to the front yard. You're right.
Yeah.
But, this is the, it's a continuous wall. It's a patio on the level above.
Right.
It's an entrance to a garage. It's all on city property.
Right.
But, the wall, the front yard is on the owner's property, right? So, the revocable consent doesn't...
It doesn't affect anything on your own property, right? It's, so, yeah.
I mean, if he's guilty, it's on the regulatory thing, it would make this legal.
No, no. Because it's, you're talking about building in a map street, in a bed of street.
This is on city property.
Is it not?
It's on city property. That only works when it's your property.
That's private, yeah.
But, it is our property.
Is it your property?
The front yard structure enlargement is on our property.
You're saying the deed goes onto the sidewalk?
I'm sorry to say that again.
The deed.
Your deed is...
Shows that you own part of the sidewalk?
No.
Because it doesn't show that way on the survey.
So, just walk us through the 1985 plan.
Well, the plan doesn't clearly identify the property.
No, there's no property line.
The reason I'm asking the question, the stairs. The stairs is on city property.
Yes, and the garage.
And the garage.
Yes.
After that, that...
We have 3'5 front yard.
Right.
And then, our structure begins. That's all within the front yard, on our property? Is there anything to file that would...
No. So, here's the thing. The survey shows your property line ending before the staircase begins. It's a scent from the street. So, you have, I don't know what that is, like 6 feet or something, that is from your property line to the beginning of, to that wall that begins your steps up, right?
Yes.
That sits on city property. So, in the, in the olden days, probably when this house was built in the '40s or something like that, right, everybody took advantage of a little bit of the street, and the city had no problem with it, so you're probably grandfathered like that. What I don't know, I don't know if anybody else knows, is to what extent the city kind of regulates what you do within city property when you've got a grandfathered condition? Like, if I, if I think about brownstones that often have very large stoops, and they often have like little front areas where there's a gate, you see people changing the stoops all the time, changing the gates all the time, and I'm not aware that they get any approvals from Department of Transportation, who owns the sidewalk, right? If they just get it from the Department of Buildings. So, if buildings agreed to your modification of that area within city property, arguably, I don't know if there was an objection to that. Was there an objection?
Yeah, that was number 10, and it was resolved. I wasn't really talking about what's outside of the property. I'm talking about what's within. I'm trying to see if there's a way to resolve the front yard enlargement with...
Oh, no.
Yeah, no.
That would only work if you owned the property that sits on city land, that sits on a street. There would be a way to do it if you owned the land that was sitting on the city street.
Outside of the property?
Yeah, outside.
Okay.
Well, that's the thing. It would be inside your property, right?
Yeah.
So, if the property line moved forward, which it can unless you do this really difficult thing called a de-mapping action at City Planning, so, and it's not really a feasible thing to do.
And that would be for the entire length of the street, not just for your portion?
I see, yeah.
Yeah, well, in addition, you would never do it for a little house. So, okay, Norwood City Planning.
Though, interestingly, that all the buildings on that particular frontage, they're maintaining this street line of the building set from 1910. So...
It's clearly established.
It's an established, yeah. Right.
But, I'm not sure, like, the adjacent building encroaches on the sidewalk to the same...
It does.
Well, I mean, in terms of this, this wall, this patio...
It encroaches in a series of stairs. That's the, the way they resolve the elevation change?
Well, I'm just talking about the amount of structure on the city property. I mean, you have a patio, a deck, an entire wall, right? 6 feet onto the city property, which I don't think, I mean, I guess you should show what the other, older homes have constructed.
I think in one of the submissions, there's a few images that clarify that, but...
The neighbors have walls and gardens and stairs and fences and all that stuff. It seems to be a pretty standard approach to, yeah, it's kind of strange that the city drew the line there.
It would probably be helpful to show what the older homes have done.
Yeah. You could do that by just showing some photos from the street, you know? You could even go on Google Earth.
Does the board need more photos?
Sorry?
Does the board need more photos?
Yeah, you could show, for instance, I'm just on Google Maps, and you can see all the examples of the pretty tall walls with a garden behind and staircases and things like that. For that, for that group, it's not really that...
Essentially, all they've got is a larger wall and garage, right?
Right. It's not that different in character from what the others have done.
Yeah. It's just that that particular building extended its, this particular front wall up to match with the garage.
Right. And the others have stoops on the other side of the street. Those are probably on city property, too.
Oh, yeah, those look like they are, too.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, that was the standard way.
I don't think you have to show us now.
No, you don't have to show us now. Just submit those. You know, we have access also through the Google Maps and all that stuff, but, yeah...
And it's in the submissions.
Yeah, okay.
There's a series of photos here. We already submitted data.
Yeah. Okay. And we already asked if there were speakers? Yes. Okay. So, you've got a date and a submission. Thank you. Good job.
You did a good job.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, I can tell you it worked together. Okay. What do you want to do? Do you want to do the second call one and get... Oh, yeah. Because he said June 6 or something? But, I don't know if they're here. It doesn't look like they...
They're not here.
No, they're not here, so we need to do June 6. We told them June 6.
We can do June 6 on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, opposition chairman also had to leave also, and rather than, since we knew, he didn't want to have hearing closed, the architect was delayed. I wanted to just make sure, I think it's very important that the architect is here and we impressed upon him to hear the 6.
All right. So, just let me call it, though. Sorry. Item number 10, second call, 24014B6. Okay. So, what'd you say, June?
June 6.
So, continued on June 6.
There's nothing to review. You are reviewing.
Right.
And we've gone through the last review session and gone back through all the hearing tapes, still in the process. Some of them are interesting hearings.
Yes, they are.
So, we'll, we'll go through the list, but I think there was a list that was discussed yesterday. If, I could just ask one question, though. There was one comment made about cellar slab that wasn't clear from review session, and I haven't gotten there in the review tapes yet. I'm just wondering if you could write a little clarification, so I can pass that on to the architect.
I think the issue was the cellar slab...
You couldn't have any below-grade cellar.
Yeah, below design flood.
Yeah.
Below grade.
Below grade.
Yeah, because of the flood.
Yeah, you, they had to, they have to fill in their cellar if it's below, if it's excellent, so that, you know, water just flows along the surface. It doesn't accumulate in a swimming pool under your house.
That's enough that I can pass on.
Unless you want a swimming pool, right?
Indeed, the comments about, like, keeping the building, because it appears that they're, that you're getting rid of all the floor joists. I mean, that's the type of thing, that if you have a revised set of plans that shows that you're retaining the building, submit them on Friday, and we will put them in the record and distribute them, because that's a...
The irony, actually, he, they forwarded to me, and I have demolition plan showing that already, so we'll include that as part of the record.
Yes, yeah, definitely submit that already.
We'll submit that early, and then, in conjunction with everything else, if there's any other plans, we'll submit, and then we'll have somebody hear the 6, and then Mr. Plannett will be able to be here also.
And so, with that submission, just the cover letter saying why you're submitting those, okay?
Sure.
Great. Great. Thank you. Item number 16, 27315BC, 11043160th Street, Queens.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant. Good afternoon. I'm joined today by Misha Sangha, the project architect, as well as the owner of the home at the premises. Madam Chair, we were brought in as counsel, zoning counsel, for this application, subsequent to the filing and the first hearing. So, this is our first hearing on this matter. And so, much of the materials which were submitted in the April submission were for cleanup purposes. I think that the applicant, particularly the project architect, did an admirable job in making the necessary changes. And essentially, this project requests one variance of 23461C, so it's a distance between buildings, issue the open area between buildings. And very simply, were the applicant to comply with, as of right regulations, the building would be 11 feet wide, 10 feet 5 inches with wall thickness. So, we provide ample precedent to the board that that would not provide a practical solution as far as building a home. And so, we really come down to the uniqueness finding and the level of proof. I think that the, the study provided was deficient. I think we identified the vacant lots in the study, but we didn't really provide the meat of the evidence, which would be demonstrate that, in our example, these vacant lots were jointly owned by adjacent owners. So, to recap the evidence here, in the surrounding 400-foot radius, there were identified five, well, actually, eight vacant lots. There's several of those, three of those, I think, were for a parking lot, which we're going to identify on that vacant lot study. But, the remaining five lots, which were interior lots, which would be subject to the application of 23461, of those, all of those lots were jointly owned with a neighboring owner. And so, we now have, I have in my hand deed evidence demonstrating that all five of those lots are jointly owned. And that's available for submission to the board, you know, immediately.
Perfect.
And in addition, we know that the board, as is the case in many of these cases, wanted evidence of separate and single ownership of this lot. We have that evidence as well. It actually dates, I have it dating back to 1967, so we're, you know, we're fairly clear on the fact that this, or 50 years this has been owned separately and singly. So, we're happy to submit that to the board as soon as possible, with the potential of bringing the case to a resolution.
Great. Okay. Is there any questions from board members about this? Okay, great. Any speakers? All right. So, assuming that you actually read the deeds, and they say what you actually said, I would say, close this, and then we can take a look at the deeds ourselves, and then we could vote on it shortly. You know, whenever we have a spot where we could vote on it.
No, I mean, this is, sounds like straightforward, so we could do June 6. If that's enough for you guys to...
That's plenty.
...to run it around, right?
Yeah. I think... Right. So, if you could submit it immediately...
Sure.
Then, we can quickly take a look at the deeds, make sure they, we agree with your analysis.
Sure.
So, what dates the submission, like 5:00?
So, submission is immediately, so, because they need to be. So, that would be submission May 17, because you're holding them in your hand?
Correct.
Right. Okay. So, so then, with a continuation on, I mean, yeah, continuation on June 6, or decision, sorry, decision on June 6.
And Chair, we pulled this information off of ACRIS. There are certain instances where the one deed will be for A Ellis, and the second will be for L Ellis, so it's clearly a relation. There's others where there's two owners on one, but then there's only one of those same owners on a, so it's, it basically demonstrates the unity and interest.
Okay.
That's all. Okay? But, we're happy to submit those tomorrow.
Okay, great. So, for a motion to close? Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Item number 17, 20164211BC, 1052 East 23rd Street, Brooklyn. Good afternoon, Larry Altman from Lots of Larry Altman. Sorry. Go ahead. I just said, "Good afternoon, Larry Altman from Lots of Larry Altman." Yes. All right. You don't think we had anything left? We didn't seem to have any comments from you today. Correct. So, are there any speakers on this? I see none. There's hardly anybody here. Does anybody have any comments on the word? Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Commissioner Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Item number 18, 20164147BC, 57-1258 Place, Queens.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant. Chair, I know that the board asked us to look at the findings of 4247, and from the executive session, it appears that we've satisfied the board.
Yeah.
So, I'd say that the comments that we received from the executive session fell into one of three areas. I know that there were architectural aspects of the building, particularly Department of Buildings and code requirements, that need to be addressed by the project architect. He's been informed of those. He unfortunately is not able to attend today, but is preparing a letter for the board to address all such issues, inclusive of compliance with the Building Code and MDL, meeting ADA requirements, means of egress, et cetera. I think that there was an open issue, which was whether or not he'd be able to demonstrate compliance merely by signing and sealing a letter on his letterhead, or whether or not the board was actually going to require that he go to DOB for determination. Well, obviously, hopeful that it can be determined through the former rather than the latter.
Well, he would have to do more than signing letter, and he'd have to show us the sections in the various codes that support the claims that those things are.
Okay.
Right? So, the concern about whether or not you can have a ladder to the roof, I'm not sure you'll find that in the code. That's one where I've encountered it myself on my own projects, where they, they said, "Oh, no. No ladder. It's 3." Fire department might also help with that. You might contact Mr. Scaduto.
Okay.
But, I don't know whether fire department, in this case, sort of trumps Buildings Department, or whether you'd be, encounter a different reaction. You might reach out to a code expert on fire codes with 3 families.
Okay. On preliminary review, there may be provision, which, again, we're going to submit on this, which demonstrates that, to the extent, even in a multiple dwelling, if there's only one unit per floor, that you may be able to do that.
Okay. But, then it would be stated clearly in the regulations.
Correct.
My experience was with one that was 3 units, 1 per floor, and I still had to do the bulkhead, but maybe that was just Department of Buildings being overzealous, you know, and whatever. I, when I was looking for a house, the 3-bedroom homes had the fire escape in the rear. Well, they had fire escapes. Yeah, as the old, yes, the second means of egress. But, you're not allowed to put a fire escape anymore. So, that's the thing. In the, in most buildings, you have a fire escape, because they're pre-existing multiple dwellings.
I'd also just bring up that the reason that the bulkhead was removed was because of comments by the board?
We said it was too large, reduce its size, which usually just means make it sloping.
Okay. So, to the extent that that would actually solve some of the inquiry, I think the architect would be happy to put that back.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, maybe that kind of takes care of some of those issues.
Yes. And then the ADA is really just to show that he's got adequate turning radius?
Sure.
And then the other is the, okay, the one means of egress question.
Right. Okay. The, this, there was a second, I guess, set of issues with regards to the financial valuation and the analysis.
You know what, I want to amend what I said.
Oh, good.
And then.
Hopefully in a good way.
Although I have to say, discounting the site value by 10%, I don't think was appropriate. But even if you zeroed out the site value, you probably would not be able to get a positive return.
That's correct. If you want a, if you want a letter in that regard, I have a letter for submission to the board from Ms. Cohen, but that's correct. So we thank you for your friendly amendment. We consent to the friendly amendment. So, okay, I'm, so perhaps this handles the majority of the comments with regards to the financial return. I would add that, I know that there was a question with regards to HPD sign-off. We've had subsequent conversations with HPD. I think that the determination in their regard was that potentially the board would delay any final determination of the matter until HPD finally voted out, voted this, not voted this out, but approved the configuration. As a matter of public disclosure, in the interim, HPD asked us to meet with the local council member, Elizabeth Crowley, who said that she was satisfied with the level of affordability that was proposed. So that information has been provided to paras slaughter of HPD. So, and that was done because this, this will go back to the council for a vote. So we're, we seem to be producing on the HPD front. And I know that with regards to DEP, Hiram Rothkrug has made a submission to DEP and we're awaiting sign-off from them.
So just in terms of the modified plan to.
Correct.
Phase two modified.
Correct.
So you don't know if that's a go yet?
We don't. We're hopeful.
And we also, it was also about air quality.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. There's air quality and noise.
Right.
That needs to be air quality and.
Okay.
Do you know what the rents are going to be set at?
I only know for the affordable unit. So there were two market rate and then there was one affordable unit. And we reviewed those rents. It would be the, it would be at or below 80% of AMI. So I think that for that one unit, it was going to be something between 1,000 and 1,100.
And which unit would be?
It would be the, the smaller unit. And that was done, in essence, because what we've demonstrated is that setting the rent for one of the two-bedroom units would, at that level, would cause the project to go negative. And so that's, that's been acceptable. So, and HPD particularly asked us to talk to the council member about that and she was accepting at that level.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. That's like every, Commissioner Montanes had, you said something about.
Yes, that does. Whether the owner demolished the building too soon prior to getting the authorization from city planning. And if they had just waited, even if it was in poor condition, you wouldn't be in this situation.
Having been actively involved in that discussion, there was a real pressing concern in the surrounding area that this was subject to collapse. So it was, and we understood everything that went into that. There was an immediate conversation with HPD, who basically said to us, you know, consented to the demolition. So while that, in essence, caused us to fall outside of 4247, you know, when looking at the evidence here, although it would have been far easier for us to bring that application to a conclusion, the truth is that the evidence still, we feel, solidly supports the 7221 variance here. You look at the, the size of the lot, you look at the fact that within the radius that we examined of 32 lots, I think 27 of them are residential and four of the remaining lots are used in conjunction with a larger manufacturing property. So granted that, believe us when we say that we would have much rather have gone through the 4247 process, but we ended up with no choice.
Okay, great. And I know for a fact you did try.
Ah, thank you. And that, and that opinion has been signed off by all relative, relevant conflicts boards and everybody. So we're happy to have the vice chair weigh in.
Okay. So we still do need side elevations?
Yes.
Right? Make the understanding of the building complete. Let me see if there is anything. Oh, okay. Okay. So we, I don't know, can we close this or do you still need any information?
No.
So we could close this because, oh, no, we can't.
Don't say it right. No. No, Joe, no.
Well, no, the environment, what is this?
No, it's air and noise and.
It's air quality and noise and.
Part of the condition is probably approved. But those are, but the, we often close variance cases where we have outstanding analysis ready to go. I mean, if there is something.
We would reopen.
Truly, yeah, upsetting, we could reopen it.
Ryan, this is where it's an alternative to a phase two. They're proposing an alternative to a phase two.
Right.
I would add that the, it would be very meaningful to the, to the owner of the building who, after a failed city planning application, has, through no fault of any of the city agencies, of course, has now been at this for over four years.
Right. I mean, we could always reopen if we have an environmental concern, right? It's mostly us closing it is just sort of a way of managing our calendar if nothing else, doesn't go to the substance of the decision, right?
Yeah, there's, you know, we have what.
Yeah, well, closing, we often get submissions. We have a lot of applications where the only thing that's outstanding is air quality.
The record is, is still open for submissions. In fact, I think we would need to be, you know, we'll leave it open because we'll want confirmation from HPD.
The record, yeah.
That they're cool with, with this going forward, right? I mean, that's the, that's the real threshold of this. I mean, obviously, the environmental has to be sent off.
I think it's okay because we can always reopen.
Yeah, we can always reopen.
All right. So I'd like to, are there no speakers? There's an empty audience. Todd's okay with us voting. So for a motion to close, Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair.
How long do we, for the, I mean, like I said, the environmental, we're doing.
That could be a while, but what's.
That could be a while, but not, I think that HPD is.
I think HPD would also need the environmental sign-off for the mad.
While they have not specifically said that, I'm sure that they.
You should verify that. I think they do.
Yeah, if they're going to be an interested agency, you should know that.
Yeah.
But they'll, I think.
They promised it June 1st.
Oh, great.
HPD first? HPD did or no?
DEP. DEP and environmental.
Promise the response to the submission June 1st, but that doesn't mean.
They have to still do the work, though.
Yeah, that doesn't mean it's a sign-off, right?
You guys have submitted, they've submitted the work. Just the proposal, so they haven't do the work. They haven't done the work.
Yeah.
All right.
No.
So I'm thinking that really it's going to be July.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
How about end of July?
End of July gives us some.
July 25.
Yeah.
But, but in terms of the drawings, you would submit that sooner, July, July 5th?
Okay.
You would submit the drawings.
Great.
And obviously, the sign-offs from DEP and HPD could be the day, the morning of the hearing, frankly.
We will bookmark that morning.
Is there something else? No? Okay, okay.
This concludes the morning calendar. We'll resume at 1:00, 1:30?
Do you want to take 1:30?
1:30.
Actually take some.
We'll resume at 1:30.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
July 26th. We're going to do two or three first, Madam Chair? You want to do two or three first? You want to do two?
Number two. You're in charge. All right. We wanted to do the PCs first, right? Because those are fast and you decide because you're looking at the numbers and.
Yeah. Okay. Good afternoon, we're back on the record. This is zoning calendar. New cases, item number two, 2016-4184 B.C., 194 Orchard Street, Manhattan. Yeah, this one. This one she has to recuse.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Yes, we do have DOI now.
Good.
And I think we have plans that show all the physical separations super detailed and environmental forward. Can you talk just about those violations that opened?
Just, just note, Equinox did reach out to the property owner regarding those open violations. It was described that those violations pertain to contractor and some work that they did outside, partially blocking streets, that they're still being addressed, but it is an issue that the property owner is working on with the contractor at this point. I don't know what the current status is, other than they said it was being addressed.
Okay, but it's not related to Equinox?
No, it is not.
Okay. Any comments from the board, one way or the other? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, this one, just as we're doing things a little out of order, 194 Orchard, no speakers? Okay.
Do the fines that you asked about, are you talking about the violations, the fines? CEO's fines?
He did. He talked about all the fines in ECB, sort of one matures ECB and one's still DOB stage, but.
And the community will vote in no when you know what it is?
Well, we know why. They explained why, so we discussed that.
Okay.
We discussed it yesterday in review session, so I don't know that we need to repeat it. Okay, so on that note, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Vice Chair, sorry, Chair Promoter?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, 2016-4185 B.C., 10818 Roosevelt Avenue, Queens.
Good morning or good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Right, we also got DOI on this one.
Good. There were a couple of questions raised, I just want to pass these up. These were just submitted this morning. They are revised plan set, and if you look at the second floor sheet, those are the entire plans, the second floor sheet includes an inset with acoustic detail of what's proposed between the first floor retail tenant and the lowest level of PCE. I think it's sheet three.
Three, yeah.
Has the acoustic detail. Now, that was one of the questions that was raised.
So, okay, so there's a rubber floor that is where?
Everywhere.
Underneath, under all the onboarding stuff.
Correct.
Right, okay. Then?
There's also a wall detail that's listed there, even though that's, no wall is adjacent to another use, they included a wall detail with floor detail.
And there's something called a deflection track. I don't know what a deflection track is. Seems like it's an opportunity to put insulation between the top of the, top of the metal stud, essentially, to the runner.
Right. The way it was described to me, just briefly in a message, was that in addition to the rubber flooring, that it created a pocket where they could put insulation above the first floor.
Okay. Right. Okay. And then the other question was about calculating the parking.
Noted that it would change, the only change in the zoning analysis would be that it's based on one space per 1,000 square feet for the waiver. It was based just on the PCE on the original form. We did not submit a new form, I can submit it this afternoon. The change would be to 20 spaces would be required because I think the building is 20,000 square feet, which would still be waived under that particular provision. So no parking. So it's a simple change from a 14 to a 20 and we can get that form in shortly.
In the interest of, I don't know that we, it's not material really, as long as it stays under the waiver, we can make a note in the resolution, I suppose, that we're just noting that the parking is waived because it's at the 20, which is less than 25?
It's under 25 and the section is cited at the bottom of the zoning analysis, I think it's.
Because since it's not specifically about the PCE, I don't see why we actually need to amend the plans. Okay. Is everybody all right with that? So then, are there any speakers on this one? This is 10818 Roosevelt Avenue? No, okay. So any other comments from board members? All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, but she has to say what it is.
You want to do the vote?
Oh, then we just closed. I just closed. Sorry. So and a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, 2016-4231 B.C., 51 Astro Place, Manhattan.
Okay, I'm going to recuse from this.
Okay. Good afternoon, Jay Golstein for the applicant. We had someone at yesterday's review session, I'd like to address the board's questions. With regard to the first question of whether fire saw the amended plans, they were sent to the Fire Department as part of our response to NOC and it's my understanding the Fire Department has no issue with this application. I don't know if you want to confirm.
Just an option.
Hey, good afternoon, Anthony Scaduto, Fire Department. Yes, we looked at the plans. It answers the question. We wanted to see where that egress from the locker rooms went and we're familiar with the building, so we, even though we don't see the main floor egress path, it's acceptable. So yes, it's acceptable.
And while you're here, there was also fire, there was a follow-up inspection that was to be performed. Has a date been set for that?
No, but they're in the system and like we have in previous cases, if it's already in my system, we're willing to allow the board to go forward because our people will follow up.
Okay. Thank you.
And to that point, we also submitted yesterday the approved sprinkler application. So that was, that's finalized, the fire alarm will be finalized shortly.
Okay.
With regard to the notice to occupants of the building pursuant to the board's, the building and the tenants were notified pursuant to the board's requirements and we submitted an affidavit to that effect.
And I, just for the record, I noticed it after the hearing, so.
No problem. Happy I had the right answer. And the final point was an affidavit requested from the architect confirming the as-built conditions. So we submitted yesterday as well. It was a signed and sealed letter from the architect confirming that to the best of his knowledge and belief and professional judgment, everything was complied with. I believe that was all the questions.
Commissioner Montanes, is there any?
I just have the question about fire alarms.
And, I think they're fine. So with that, I don't think we have any other issues. Any speakers? None? You want to close?
Motion to close.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to, is approved? Grant.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Ms. Oftley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, 2016-4250 B.C., 133 East 58th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. James English and David A. Kaminsky and Associates for the applicant Transform Fitness.
Good morning. Did you want to respond to, did you hear our questions yesterday at the review session?
No, no.
No, okay, that's right. So I think we don't have Fire Department sign-off on this yet, so we need their comment. But in your statement of fact, you make reference to a Department of Buildings application for something like 9,300 square feet of space for a dance studio and now this is an application for only 1,100 square feet.
I believe, I believe the, it's 1,100 square feet is the, is the space, is the space that we're talking about. So if it was 9,000 somewhere else, that was an effort.
Okay, it, I don't know. Don't understand, yeah, you were giving a history of the Department of Buildings applications and it seemed like it had been like a youth group nine dance studio or some, I just don't understand.
No, it's, it's a fitness center, it's a gym, it has sessions, classes, engagements for, let's say, four sessions at a time. There are no more than, say, 16 persons in the space at a time with four to five fitness instructors. And so that's, that's the type of, and it holds some weight equipment, not loose weights, And so that's the type of, and it holds some weight equipment, not loose weights, but weight equipment, very new, cutting-edge type of equipment, very new, cutting-edge techniques for health and fitness.
Then you also make reference, someone whoever, I don't know, who did the drawings, but on the drawings, it says that there are fire alarms. I'd like to know whether there are fire alarms and we need information to provide to the fire department to show that you're complying with fire safety requirements according to the fire department's specifications.
Okay, and so.
Do you know whether, it is very unclear, the drawings say there are fire alarms.
Yes.
I don't know whether there actually are because usually we ask for proof that there are fire alarms and also that the fire department has inspected and signed off on them and that they're, you know, actively maintain their own fire alarm.
Okay. Are there fire alarms in the place?
If you're going to speak.
Sorry, this is one of the principles of Transform Fitness.
So state your name, please.
My name is Paul Watson, I'm one of the other several programs. We have fire alarms that like, you know, that are, but they, they're on the, within the building itself, there is a fire alarm on the outside of the suites is directly, we have a, I was put up a little while back, it's kind of like a patch through for, if they make announcements for fire safety in the building, yeah.
Are there any fire alarms inside the space?
You know what, like a pull box, where in the event of a fire, you pull? No.
So you only have an enunciator?
What?
The only enunciator which announces the.
The enunciator for the building to announce if there's a fire test.
On the floors, on the floors. All the floors have, basically, an area where people would migrate for if there were fires.
So do you ever conduct fires? How long have you been there?
We've been there for 12 years.
12 years. So do you have regular fire safety?
It was just, I think it was like two weeks ago.
So you meet in the lobby, I mean in the corridor of the elevator and you talk about fire safety?
Yeah, basically the department representative, the fire department will come and he will basically talk about all the regulations and all the things pertaining to fire specific, you know, as far as like active shooter, the whole line yard, so then basically we'll go through the whole procedure.
Okay. Also, oh, do you have massage offered in your, like massage therapy offered? No? Because you have some rooms that look like they're.
They're busy, kind of like, it's a room that's separate and basically we will do stretches and stuff like that.
Not massage, okay. Okay. I don't think we had any other questions here, so we just need fire department to comment if they want to on anything.
Good afternoon, Lieutenant Chair Anthony Scudino Fire Department. This is kind of a special condition, this is a Class E building and this is, I believe, is like the ninth floor and it's sweet within that building. I know and it is confirmed that there's working Class E fire alarm system in the building, this is what he was discussing, there's warden stations and so on. This individual space does not have any fire protection within. I thought I wrote something on this, but it appears I didn't.
I didn't.
What I would look for in this is, if possible, I would like to recommend that at least smoke detection be brought into the space and we will allow it to be tied into the existing Class E system.
So it's assuming there's smoke detectors already in the hallways or something like that?
This is, you know, I'll make that recommendation, but like I said, because this is a working Class E building, this is one of those special entities where we really don't have any, you know, major objections to it unless the board wants to follow suit on what we do with the.
Because they've been operating this for.
Yeah, like I said, and because it's a Class E building, you know, it's one of those special animals, we're really, we don't, we don't really feel that it's necessary to add all of those requirements that we have for other types of installations, so I would really leave it to the board if you'd like to just have them install smoke, but we're not demanding it at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, it's been, I'm just looking at, in 2006, okay, so the history seems to be that DOB approved an application for a dance and fitness studio and then in 2006 they determined that it needed a special permit and then for some reason that application was withdrawn, I don't really understand that story.
Right, I believe that the landlord of the building at the time, that the space was being built out, put in those applications and I believe there was a discrepancy about who should actually be putting in that particular application, landlord of the building, tenant, so I believe those were the issues back then.
Okay. I'm wondering whether we could just do this as a condition? Yeah, I mean, they've been operating for 13 years, is that what you said?
Just adding a smoke detector.
Right. Okay. Is that okay with everybody? Are there any speakers on this? Okay. So what we're going to do is, we're going to vote on this, but we're going to make a condition of approval that you do connect, put smoke detectors on the inside of your space that connects to the smoke detection system for the building, okay? I think it would run from today because we've never had a permit on this before, even though they started one way back when, they withdrew it for confusion purposes, I guess, due to confusion. Okay. So a term would begin as of the date of the grant, right, assuming a positive vote, okay? So then, a motion to close? Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that a smoke detector be installed on the interior of the space and connected to the main smoke detection system and for a term of 10 years as of the date of the grant. Okay, on that motion. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six, 20164254BZ, 120 Lennox Avenue, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Anthony Mango for the applicant, I love kickboxing. This is a utilization of PCE that's been open since roughly March of 2016. In review of the review session yesterday, and I think there were three items raised, if I'm correct, I think the first item was with respect to noise attenuation with the heavy bags. These bags are not mounted on the ceiling, they're floor bases that are filled with 280 pounds of water and underneath there's a special padding. Underneath the studio is a garage, a parking garage, so there's really no, there's been no issue with noise, they've been open for over a year. And like I said, they're not attached to any of the structural elements of the building. As far as notice to residents, that was submitted, proof of that was submitted last month, what we did was in the previous review session, this had been adjourned from I think a prior March, earlier March date, we had submitted, we had posted notice in the lobby slash mailroom of the building, it's a residential apartment building, and that was posted back in March and submission was submitted of the proofs in April. I think the last item is the fire department alarm system inspection, we had a reinspection on April 14th and there were three remaining items that need to be addressed, one of which is the music automatic shutdown, another there were some adjustments that needed to be made to smoke detectors and there was the, then the reinspection form. That's in process, the changes to the system are being made this week and we hope to have reinspection done next week.
Okay. The fire department is next.
Good afternoon, Anthony Scudino Fire Department. As with other cases, this is in our system, it's active and they're addressing the problems, so for this venue, we have no objection if the board continues to vote on the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, thank you. All right, so what I'd like to.
Maybe a speaker.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, yeah, sure.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Tariq Shahid, I'm from the historic mosque, Malcolm Shabbaz, on the corner of 116th and Malcolm X Boulevard and we've been there for about 70 years. We also own two properties on the block that the kickboxing is on and we oversee the Harlem Market directly across the street and we're just here to say we're 100% support, we've been there and we come for full support of the program, we think it's dignified and we enjoy having it there.
Great, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this? Okay, don't go away. You're actually the applicant, right? Okay, so the only thing I want to make clear again in our record is about the, because you don't have it on the drawings, is that the bags, correct my, correct me if I've described this wrong, the bags are, sit on a water base, right? On a water-filled base?
Right.
Which in turn sits on top of padding. Is that correct?
Well, there's a padded floor mat, it's called a swain mat, right, I believe that's in the drawing, but maybe the bag is not depicted as, I don't think it's depicted as hanging from the ceiling though.
No, no, just to make sure that we.
Right.
Have that, so the reason that it's relevant is when you come back for renewal, assuming that, you know, this is a very long-lasting business, we want to make sure that you're complying with that minimum standard of attenuation, so it's a water-filled base that sits on top of that kind of padding. What's it called again?
Swain mat.
Swain.
It's a floor mat, it's a, I think it's a brand name, it's a thick floor mat.
Floor mat, okay. And it's located above a parking garage?
Correct.
Okay? Okay, so having noted that, I'd like to make a motion to close, did I ask if there were speakers? Yeah, make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Oh, sorry.
I didn't know if I did that. Sorry, Vice Chair Chanda, I'm sorry. That's just something in the air. I know there's something in the air.
I just don't have her voice to say hi.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go. Item number one, 20164131BZ, 901 Quentin Road, Brooklyn. Why is that?
Good afternoon, Todd Dale here, on behalf of this application, seeking both variances and a special permit to allow construction of a cellar, four-story school building for Shiva Teretora, the current occupant of the site. In addition to our office, we have representatives from the school, project architect and the programmatic study needs team that can make presentations and answer any questions that might come either from review session or statements today. To start, wanted to provide a brief history, address some of the general questions that were raised at review session. Shiva Teretora has been at this location for over three decades, I believe it's actually 1986 when the original school building opened. Currently, there's three buildings at the site. The first, the original building, was constructed pursuant to an approval of the board, the original grant was in 1984, was then amended in 1986 prior to construction when they determined that a fourth floor would be necessary. There is also, on the east side of the site, a trailer with classrooms that was authorized by the Department of Buildings in 1992 and at the northeast corner of the site, there is a townhouse that was converted to administrative school offices and we provided the record that the certificate of occupancy was updated to reflect the school office use in 2005. There was a question that was raised at review session regarding the grant and the fact that it wasn't amended in conjunction with approvals. And that's true, but we would note that, you know, as the school determined that they needed more space and more buildings, that they consistently went to Department of Buildings, obtained approvals for both the trailer and the building and that, you know, in conjunction with this particular action, should it be approved, records of the BSA would reflect the changes. Just wanted to note that, you know, upon all information and belief from the school that, you know, by going to Department of Buildings, they really were trying to do the right thing and get the approvals. As evidenced, I think, by these buildings and the fact of, you know, since the original construction in 1986 and then the trailer and then the additional building, it's, the school has done its best to manage the, its programmatic needs on this particular site and this particular application in seeking the new building is just a recognition that, you know, as time has gone on over three decades, that the new school building is really necessary in order to satisfy what they hope to achieve. This particular design is actually the result of many different designs that were explored. With the application materials, we submitted three different hazard bright plans, floor plans for the, what we believed was the most likely of those hazard bright plans, they represent just a few of the possible designs that were considered. In addition, you know, we would note that there was actually a pre-application meeting for this particular site and it was at that pre-application meeting that we, some direction was provided as far as considering the current design, which calls for the loading off of the site and the interior recreation space. So the current design, I know there were questions that were raised about that and we can speak to them, but the recreation space in between the two schools was really thought out and considered as being essential for the safety of the students and the best option with respect to the continued use of the existing building and also the need to provide different recreation spaces. You know, it was discussed briefly, but there is a recreation space that's proposed for the new building. However, this site will provide education to boys of a wide range of ages from first grade to 12th grade, once it's eventually developed. The different recreation areas will be used by different segments of the student population. The top of the new building is proposed for the high school students, ninth through 12th, and the ground floor recreation area would be for the younger students, this is in addition to the gymnasiums that are there. And the space is necessary and it's also necessary for separation of these two areas because, you know, as the school representatives can speak to that issue, having a combined recreation space when you have first graders and 12th graders together really just isn't effective or feasible, there's different levels of play and activities that they engage in, so there is a safety issue as far as separating the ages. In addition to the fact that this particular recreation area in the middle really protects the students, you know, as they're engaged in activities that are outside. You know, again, we can expand upon it, but there was some discussion regarding the drive-through lane for the drop-off lane for the buses and going through the center area. It was determined that it's just using that space for any sort of combined use between drop-off and recreation for the students would just be a safety issue for the children. You know, having to clear out the children, to bring the buses in and then there's staggered arrivals for the different buses, so depending on what ages the students come in, certain children will come in, they may be using the area, students whose classes start a little bit later might be in the area and to have to constantly clear out that area and then repopulate it, clear it out as the bus deliveries are, just arriving, creates an awkward situation and actually decreases the safety for children as opposed to the current setup. You know, we noted in papers that Quentin Road between East 9th Street and 10th Street is a no standing zone, which is currently used for the schools. That particular space can actually hold up to five buses back to back to back if they plan it correctly and again, the school representatives can speak to the operation, but this is a very efficient operation, they've been doing it for many, many, many years and it's easy to monitor the departure and arrival of the students in this particular area, much easier than it would be through the internal lane. The other factor is, is that Quentin Road as it's set up would allow for the back-to-back buses. Any internal drop-off would run into issues where buses might need to queue, potentially on side streets waiting for buses to unload. The interior doesn't afford the opportunity to do simultaneous loading and unloading as conveniently as the Quentin Road current area setup is.
So I, I mean, I think some of this discussion should be with school administrators, but to this point of combined function, we'd need to see how the schedule works, but I, because I don't actually see that there's a conflict in terms of scheduling, kids are arriving and brought upstairs and they're not left in the play yard upon initial arrival, so I'm not really sure how that's working.
Sure, we can speak to that, but the other issue is that not all students are arriving by buses, there might be students who arrive early to the school who wait in that particular area, in the recreation area, which makes sense, if it's a nice day, they're outside, they're in this area while buses potentially would be coming in and out and that would create a conflict of having to monitor. The simple fact is, again, I will let you speak to it, but the Quentin Road system, which has been in effect for, you know, many, many years, you know, of note, that loading and unloading zone was actually established after the original special permit granted, so, you know, the original drop-off lane that's shown would have been necessary at the time because Quentin Road at that time was not reserved for the school or set up for the school to do its unloading and unloading. Once that area was set up, it was afterwards and it actually became a better, safer, more efficient setup, but we can get expansion upon that. Just wanted to, departure and arrival, something like that. I know there were some initial questions regarding the numbers that were in the programmatic need study and the statement, I can provide some of the figures, but again, we can adjust some of the tables in case there were confusion, but the core confusion that may have come about is that certain tables refer to the total student population of boys, certain numbers refer to the boys that are currently on the site at this time, so there's a separation between the two figures. At the time of filing of the application, there were 678 boys on-site and that represented pre-1 through 12th grade. There were nursery and kindergarten boys that were at a school off-site, not at this particular location. The 907 number reflects the 678 that were.
Sorry, what? Sorry, 678 boys, pre-1 to 12th on-site and pre-K is.
Nursery and kindergarten were off-site and.
How many?
907 minus 678, so I would say that that is 229, doing quick math.
How much, say that again?
229.
For a total of?
For a total of 907. And you can double-check that math if I'm off. Currently, you know, subsequent, this application was filed, currently during this school year, there's actually 551 students on-site and 921 total. It is changed so that onsite. It is changed so that onsite at Quentin Road, it's currently third grade to 12th grade only. In preparation...
Can you repeat the numbers?
Sure. It's with a bang. I'll wait till they bang again. So, 551 currently on-site, 921 boys total. So, the difference would be 370. On-site, it's third through 12th grade currently. In preparation for, you know, possible grant of the application, the office building and the trailer are now vacant, so they're not being used. That accounts for what the discrepancy is there.
And why are they not being used?
Because in preparation, anticipation of the possible construction, they didn't want to have the possibility of displacing them mid-school year, so they figured better to plan right now not to have it. Going forward, again, we can, you know, confirm the numbers, but just to, you know, generally, the plan going forward should be granted is that post-construction in the older building, pre-1 to 8th grade would be in the older building, and 9th through 12th would be in the new building. The nursery and kindergarten students would still be off-site. So, the figures that we showed as far as projections within the study going forward in the expected population, those figures did account for all the students. We can revise that to take out the nursery and kindergarten from that sector. Okay? And just as a quick, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. So, post-construction, do we actually know how many? There'll be how many in the pre-1 to 8th, and how many in the 9th to 12th?
We can figure that out. I believe that the current study listed the total population, and we may not have broken it down with the nursery and kindergarten taken out. We can confirm, but I believe that the numbers that are reflected within the study, there's a projection going forward five years, those numbers should be the total population. So, I would say roughly 75%, I think was the figure.
75%?
75% of that number would be on this site.
Okay. We need it broken down because it's this site that we're doing the studies on, right?
No, understood.
So, there, as each of us came up with different numbers at yesterday's review session, I actually didn't see some of the numbers that they found. So, there's a lot of numbers.
No, we understand, and we'll break it down at the site. Some of that information was included because, again, it was going to, trying to show, you know, that the school, Shiva Territoria, is really a big part of the community, and, you know, beyond this particular site, that they are involved in the community, and they provide education, you know, to all ages, boys and girls. With respect to that, just a quick aside, I know there were a couple of small questions that I can just point out now before we can have other people speak. The question was raised about the new building and the place of assembly that's shown on the first floor. Even though the plan for the buildings is to be 9th through 12th in the new building and the younger students in the other building, there's actually, and it's shown on the cellar level, there's a passer, but that assembly would be used by the 7th and 8th grade student prior to the start of their school day. So, there would be some need for that space because that space doesn't exist in the old building for them to have an assembly space to begin their school day. So, I just want to say, like, the breakdown that I gave you between, you know, 8th and under and 9th and 12th does have a little bit of a change with respect to...
So, this public assembly area will be used also, not just by elementary school, but also by 8th grade?
In the new building, which is for the older students.
Right.
The public assembly would, in addition to those students, be used by the 7th and the 8th graders from the old building.
It just says elementary, so we just assume this would be only used by the elementary?
We can break down clearly, you know, what elementary means. And speaking to that, I know, again, just another couple of the quick, smaller points that were raised. There was a question regarding the zoning calculations and the R5 versus the C8 district. And just to you know, there was a question about what the permitted FAR is in R5. It actually is 0.75 as shown in the zoning analysis. The reason is, is in the special Ocean Parkway district, as our office is familiar with, the permitted community facility in a commercial district, or, excuse me, is restricted to the residential district. So, there's a restriction there as far as the parameters of the Ocean Parkway district, but we can break that out to show that it's actually reduced. And there's a provision that says it's changed to R41.
Right.
So, it, we'll figure it out. But again, with respect to the zoning analysis...
I think it's 1.5.
Yeah. I don't think that's...
The R5 section's within the sub-district of the Ocean Parkway, so...
Yeah.
We'll get clarification as far as breaking down the figures, but the understanding I had is that the zoning analysis is affected by the Ocean Parkway.
It certainly is affected, but we think the wrong number was picked.
With respect to floor area, though, the proposed floor area is under what the total permitted floor area could be. I know that there was a question also, again, not to speak too much onto the school representative, there's a question regarding the total number of lunches and what was provided. Jumping ahead to that, the school provides lunch for the students that are on-site, and then there's very limited breakfast service for the 7th and 8th graders, and then there is dinner service that's available for the older students. The numbers right now would be, the maximum number of lunches would be 551 for the students that are on-site. Generally, that's 100 or 200 less, so generally 350 or so lunches. The breakfasts would be approximately 120, and then the dinner would be between 20 and 30. So, the total meals would be 590 is what that comes to, and we can break that figure. The 777 was a maximum figure three times a day. It's not accurate, so we can revise to show what the actual proposed meal.
So, what happens? So, you have a maximum number of lunches of 550, but generally, there's 300 something?
Students bring lunch.
So, students bring lunch?
Right.
Okay. And then the breakfast, most of the kids don't come for breakfast?
Correct. It's available for 7th and 8th graders who come for prayer services, have the breakfast option available. Inner service is for older students who have the option to stay later, and it's very limited. It might be 20 or so. Going forward, the plan, you know, should the approval be granted, the plan is to have, again, lunch service available for all ages and do the same situation where breakfast will be, the breakfast and dinner would stay consistent with the 120 and 20 to 30 right now. The possible lunches, because of the planned increase in population, might bump up to about 470, 670 students that are planned minus 200 who would bring their own lunch, which, again, that figure then comes now to about 600 or so, 620. We can amend, as I said, in our figures, the services. I just wanted to clarify that the 777 three times a day was not accurate.
Okay. So, it's approx, projected is approximately 620 meals in total?
Yes.
And they're all prepared on-site?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, again, so they're all prepared on-site, so then the question is, again, about the capacity of the kitchen that's only in the main existing building, right?
Right.
So, where do the older kids eat?
I'm going to defer on that until the school representative talks.
Okay. So, I hope that the school representative who's going to speak is making note of the questions, so we don't have to find them again in our notes, okay?
The only other question I would note, and again, not to step on the architect's toes, but I'll just note, just because this is a quick one, there was a question regarding the grade of the building and the raising. The core design principle is that because the basement or the lower level, the cellar level, is proposed to continue over, in order to make that even, so it's not a situation where it jumps between the two buildings...
It does jump between the two buildings. You go down a flight of stairs or up a flight of stairs or one of those.
The proposed cellar is a few foot lower than the existing cellar, so it is not at level.
Not, that's the reason for the question.
Okay. Then we'll address that. But I know that there was a question, there was also a question regarding the gymnasium level, the height, the gym needs a little bit higher height in order to, I've got enough baskets.
The reason for the question was, the gym needs X height. The cellars don't align as it is, so why not excavate the cellar down further to lower the height of the building so that you're not going up a flight to get to the first floor, which we understood you want adjacency between the outside and the interior assembly area, and you don't have it. You don't even have a way to get there.
Noted, and we can speak, let the team architects speak to that. I don't know if there are any other general questions that were raised that we can, we can, we can get to specifics and jump in as they come up, but...
We also had questions about the number of bus trips. Would that be affected by the increase in the population? And so, the operation of that also, we would want clarity.
Again, I can let the school representative speak to the, you know, the eventual plan, but as I believe we put in papers, the plan is, is really, it's anticipated that only one additional bus would realistically be needed because of the types of students that come in. It's mostly the younger students that use that, and based on current capacity. So, when we put in the information about the bus trips, I believe it's currently five buses, and the possibility of adding six is the eventual plan.
What's your, are you talking current now or when you wrote the application? Because the student bodies change. When you first wrote the application, the current was pre-1 through 8th, now it's third through 8th.
Right. At the time of the application, it was five. We, I'll get clarification, you know. You know, at this point, since the school bus question is coming up, it might be an appropriate time to have someone from the school speak a little bit about operation and history, and you can ask the bus question.
Can I just ask one other question that's not related right now, which had to do with your statement about the, you said, right now, pre-K nursery and kindergarten are off-site as of when you wrote the application, but now, today, pre-K through second is off-site?
Correct.
Now, if you look at the plans, it says pre-K on the second floor, and you talk about pre-1. What's the difference? What is pre-1, and what is the pre-K that's actually on the plans on the second floor?
Are you talking about the existing or the proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed.
Because you just said...
But you're saying it's going to be pre-1 with pre-K and nursery elsewhere.
All right. Because I understand it's like nursery to kindergarten, again, I think at this point, why don't we have...
So, my suggestion is, let's see whether we can get answers from their team, and to the extent there's unanswered questions on our list, then we'll go back.
Right. And then we can come back, and we can make a list of unanswered questions.
Yeah. Okay.
Something like that.
Good afternoon. My name is Erwin Schammer. I'm an administrator at a Territoria Center, a trustee from inception till now. I think I could answer most of the questions about programming and the way the school is being used.
So, I guess maybe we should just talk, so could you explain how many students will be in the completed project?
Okay. You want to talk about if the application's approved, what will be?
Yeah.
All right. Our goal is to put our entire boys' elementary school system in the existing building. We call it elementary school, by the way, from pre-1, which is a year before first grade through 8th. We don't have a middle school. And then our high school will occupy the new proposed building, which is from grades 9 through 12.
Okay. And how many pre-1?
From pre-1 through 8th?
Yeah.
It would probably be, today, around 670 students, I would say.
Okay. And what's the, I know you projected out to 2021.
We would probably project, I'd say, maybe another 125 students.
So, 800 students?
We could probably get 31 classrooms at an average of about 23. So, let me do a little arithmetic if I can. It all comes down to classrooms.
How many in each classroom? 23?
Average, we're averaging that. That would be approximately, you say, 720? Okay. Around there.
Oh, only 720? That's not a big increase that overall got.
That building has 31 classrooms if we dedicate it to elementary school.
Okay. Because you say, right now, you have 670, so it's only an increase of 50 students.
May I correct that?
Yes.
If we bring it back, yes. We were occupying some classrooms in the yard, which we just vacated and we're going to demolish if we approved. And, yeah, so, let's say 750 if we grow the class size slightly.
Okay. Okay. And in the high school?
The high school, we have, we provided for 12 rooms. We try to keep our high school more selective. We've been averaging at the moment about 190 students. Probably, if we go and occupy all those 12 rooms, we'll maybe get about 240, I would say, an average of 20. We try to keep the high school classes smaller and more selective. We don't accept all of our elementary school students into our high school. There are other options.
Okay. And then, maybe you could talk about this, so, in terms of the scheduling, there's been, was a lot of discussion yesterday at our review, our executive session, about how to make the drive-up work because we're concerned about the effect on the neighborhood of the buses. So, can you explain, like, how the students are brought in today?
Certainly.
Yeah. And how it goes about their days and the mixture, right?
We have an arrival time for 7th through 12th, which is earlier, it's around 7:30. I would say all of them come, either they get dropped off, or they walk, or they take a bike, because they're from 7 to 12, they don't really get buses. They come for morning services, and they have breakfast. That's what the breakfast meals are for, all right? We did mention the breakfasts that Mr. Dale mentioned for the 7th and 8th grade, 9th, 12th also have breakfast. Okay? But it's a cold service usually with cereal and oatmeal, and not everyone eats it, so, that's the reality.[1599.26] with cereal and, or oatmeal, and not everyone eats it, so, that's, that's, that's the reality. The rest of the students arrive about 8:40. We have five buses come to the site. They're all able to use the curb between East Ninth Street and East Tenth Street on Quentin Road. It's a pretty quick and safe dis-, arrival. They come right out of the buses, and they come right into the school. We have a number of students, a vast number, that live in the neighborhood. We're a community school in a way. The vast majority of our parent body live within about a couple miles of the building. So many students arrive either by foot, or they'll take scooters, which is very popular today, or bicycles. The ones who take the buses don't fill more than five, and they're not full. But they're arriving daily at 8:40. The other children come at different times. Many times, they come before start of school, so the yard is used, you know, as a holding area for them before the school be-, school day begins. Dismissal, may I talk about if the, the proposal's approved, because we're going to change the demographic? But if we had pre-one through eight, dismissal and buses would be staged three times a day. The pre-one would be dismissed at 3:45, then the dismissal for grades one through five would be at 4:20, and grade six would be at 5:30. No one else gets bused.
Okay, sorry, could, I'm sorry, could you, because it's hard to-
Yes.
...write at the same time.
Should I repeat it?
Could you just repeat those times, that they dismiss?
Sure. The dismissal times?
Yeah.
The pre-one boys, they're age five, they would get dismissed at 3:45, 3:45. The next stage would be grades one through five, they get dismissed at 4:20, and then the final pickup at 5:30 would be grade, grade six alone. I should tell you that the way we conduct our dismissal, everything's staged indoors in our lobby. We have a large enough lobby to stage all of our ridership. When the buses arrive, the boys are marched out by bus color, and the whole process takes about 10 minutes. Because we staged them, we don't really have a large number of buses at the same time. Maximum is five at this time. The curb can handle that. Upon expansion, perhaps we'd need six, but I don't think we'd grow greater than that, because of the fact that we staged it, staged the dismissal, and the fact that a large number don't even take the bus, because they live close enough. Children now, it's very popular for them to come with these scooters, and we have a big problem storing them in the building, but many of them arrive that way. So the bus population is not as, as great it would sound. I hope I addressed the question.
Yeah, so, I'm just trying to, so the high school students don't take the bus?
Not at all.
So, and the expansion in terms of the amount of students is you're accommodating another-
We would-
Seventy students?
Just about. I mean, we would expect the maximum to add another bus for the one-to-five grade dismissal and for arrival. By the way, on arrival, I should say, not everyone who takes the bus on dismissal takes the bus on arrival. A lot of parents choose to drop their children, they have children at another site that we have for girls, and many times, since they're dropping their girls off, they bring the boys. So we, we always have a smaller population ridership in the morning. I should say one other thing. We have a number of bicycles and scooters that, that arrive to the school, and part of our plan is to provide a, an area secure within the new development to store the bicycles and scooters, keep them out of the street and keep them out of the building.
We didn't see that on the plan, so we need to see.
I know, I know. We, this was something we didn't include in writing, but it's, it's been discussed, and it's certainly something we want. We also want to reduce vandalism.
Can I just say something? I'm still finding your, the numbers of young people who are going to be taking the bus a little confusing, simply because the way in which you talk about the population on site, you're not using the same groupings of students and the same numbers, so then when you talk about an increase in a certain student population, it doesn't translate necessarily directly to the number of extra buses you would need. For instance, when you talk about what's currently on site, you say like 551 students that are third to 12th grade, and 370 that are pre-one, but then in your paperwork, you say that after the construction, you're going to have 800 students that fall into the youngest age group.
Oh, sorry.
Seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty.
It was seven fifty.
Right, the papers say 800.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, today you said 750, but the papers say 800, and currently, out of the 800 and, or the 920 that are currently there on site, a lot of them are like seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, you know, up to 12th grade. So it's kind of making it hard for me to follow-
Correct.
...to determine whether you really just need one more bus or two.
I see, but many of these, I would tell you, just roughly, I tried to calculate how many children use the bus today. I'm talking about the long buses. Perhaps our ridership is about 250 to 300 maximum. It's, it, not everybody uses them naturally, and you have to eliminate anything from six, from seven and eight. There is another factor that OPT permits eligible riders through third grade if they live a half a mile from the site, but once they're in grade four to six, they have to live a mile away, and a lot of our students don't. So the ridership will naturally decline. That's another reason why the ridership is not, doesn't necessarily reflect, you know, the population of the school. I hope I've answered the question.
Yeah, yeah. And if you could actually work with council to put this together into a coherent chart or format where you show us what the population is today, what the ridership is, maybe like the percentage of that age group that uses the bus, even where you have fall off in the mornings, and then, and based on that, project the ridership in the future.
Certainly.
Okay. Then, we, I'm just going to go through some of the questions that we had. So, you had a space utilization table per, that showed all the different spaces in the school, which I believe are the existing spaces in the school. What we're, what we always look at with these cases is, how is the school using all of its facilities today? By you showing scheduling and telling us who's in what, for how long, and so on. And then, what's wrong with that? So, so, right? So that means that there is an indication of a deficiency, which is why you want to build the new school, right? So there needs to be a connection between what the utilization is today and identified issues with not having enough room, and then what the projected utilization would be if you had the rooms that you're requesting. Okay?
May I comment on this, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure.
Being involved with the school for so many years, it's very easy to add classrooms, but people lose sight of what you need in public space. And it's very difficult to run a school without enough public space. At the present, we have two public areas in our old building. One on the fourth floor, which the high school uses for assembly and prayers. And then we have a gym in the, in the basement, which is used about three or four different ways: recreation, eating, assembly, prayers. So it's maddening. What we were trying to do and accomplish with this proposal is to add two more public areas and more recreational space, if I may. At the moment, there are two recreational areas we have. We have the yard, and we have the gym of the old building. This is being used by every age group. It makes staging different ages at different recreation time, which they can't really share, extremely difficult. So the plan here was putting a new building to add the following. We would have two more recreational spaces. That would be an indoor gym in the basement and a rooftop gym, area, both dedicated to high school only. And then we would have the on-grade recreational area reserved, whatever's left of it, for the elementary, along with the existing gym. So our recreational needs, we believe, would be addressed in a very sensible way. Each group will have an outdoor recreational area and an indoor. At the same time, we have, we won't have to share the, the meal service between the schools, because we could stage the meals between high school and elementary in separate, in separate areas. So that would reduce the competition in the gym that we have now. And thirdly, one thing that's lacking for elementary school, there is no study and prayer room and assembly room that they have. The fourth floor room that we have now, we're going to convert to classrooms to house the 31 elementary school classes we're looking to do in the old building. So in order to compensate for that, we asked the architect to reserve a good portion of the lobby floor on the new building to allow our seventh and eighth graders, who are the upper elementary, to have a place to pray in the morning. They'll be able to go down, right downstairs into their, into the cafeteria and have their breakfast, and go up into the other building, with an underground passage between them. We had a pre-app meeting, I don't know if you recall, it was about a year and a half ago, and the chair recommended that we should put a passage between them so we could be able to get the refuse out through underground, we'll be able to have a passage between the, the spaces, as well as being able to access, you know, both sites. At the same time, we did discuss the play area on the outside. We were, it's very important for the school to retain as much of the on, on-grade recreational space for the elementary students. And there, naturally, that would be competitive if we had bus drop-off. For the moment, the past 31 years, we've been able to handle the bus on the curb on Quentin Road, and we think it would be a safer and much simpler condition for it. So with that direction, we decided to apply the way we did.
And the bus drop-off is only on Quentin, or does it also wrap around to ninth?
Only on Quentin Road.
Only on Quentin.
Also, on that, going back to the chart, on the utilization, there's these blank periods that are shown. What happens to the students during blank periods? It's like they vanish.
You're talking about the place of assembly rooms?
No.
Or in everything?
The utilization chart covers every classroom, all the public spaces, and it'll say between 10 and 11, this grade is here, and that grade is there, and there, and there, and then there'll be a spot that's 30 minutes, or sometimes it's an hour, where nothing happens anywhere.
Well, I'm sure we had, we have them someplace. If they weren't, we'd have to correct it.
Okay.
But I should say that during the day, a lot of times, our boys go into study halls and study, so they leave the classrooms. There may be gaps in the classrooms during those periods, maybe it wasn't clear where they're going. But outside of recess and study groups and lunch, they're supposed to be in class.
Right, okay, so that's the thing. So it seemed, we, actually, I'm looking at Commissioner Shana's, where she circles the blank space. I did exactly the same, I'm sure.
Okay, yeah, we stand, we will, we will correct it.
You see, there's these big blank spaces, and the students don't seem to have gone anywhere, so it, that should be better described, but we need it also-
Sometimes our teachers would prefer that.
Right?
Todd Dallian, understanding the issue you raised, we'll be able to revise that to account, and we'll also factor in the public assembly-
Right.
...for the staging space also, and so.
Okay, and that was-
Understood, understood.
Yeah, and that was for the existing situation. We needed for the project, the proposed and projected.
Showing how proposed will alleviate the issues of use.
Right, exactly, because with both the variance and the special permit, you need to establish that you actually need this space, as opposed to simply want it.
Won't be an issue.
Yeah. Okay, so, first, oh, and also you have color shadings, which are lovely colors, but we don't know what they mean. So if somebody could give us a key.
May I defer to-
Yeah, yeah, sure. And if, when you come up to speak, please state your name.
I'm Charles, I'm Charles Alwakil, I'm with Red Flex Architecture. I am the program consultant for Chihuahua Toret. So the colors, simply state which of the floors we're talking about. They just differentiate between the floors, that's it.
Oh.
Nothing.
Oh, it's just purple is that floor?
Yes, it's no, there's no specific significance, aside from being able to highlight the floors.
Oh, oh, okay, so it's just by floor. That was too simple, we all came up with other ideas, okay?
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, so then I go back to the administrators' questions. So the meals, the meals are actually prepped from scratch on site, or they're pre-prepared and delivered?
There, a lot of times, there's some shortcuts you could play with meals and bring a lot of food that's like partially prepared, but for the most part, we have a kitchen, they prepare all the meals. It's in, it's in the old building, and it's servicing all the grades. We're not intending to put a kitchen in the new building, because the, the existing kitchen can, can cater enough.
Okay, so, but I, I just have a question. So how does that actually work? Where do the high school students eat? Where, where's the projected location for them to eat?
Okay, the plan, the plan would be as follows. May I take you through all the-
Sure.
...the early arrival? At 7:30 in the morning, seventh and eighth grades will arrive and go into the place of assembly on the new projected lobby. And the high school students, we go to the second floor, where they have their own prayer and study hall. After that, when services are over, they have breakfast, they go downstairs, they enter this tunnel underneath to, to arrive, the seventh and eighth grade will go into the old building and have breakfast, and then go upstairs. The high school students will go into their gym, have breakfast, and then go directly upstairs in their building. Am I clear?
Okay, so you're going to the, seventh and eighth go into the old building where they've had breakfast before?
Right, they continue to have breakfast there, and they will go upstairs to class.
And the, and the high school students go into the gym?
Of their own building, and they, and when they finish, they go immediately upstairs to class.
So then, in terms of like how the kitchen actually will operate, it's going to be rolling lots and lots of carts back and forth, right?
For the high school, they'll have to, you know, bring on carts, the, the food there.
Okay.
But there's, in the new building, there's like a four-foot difference in elevation.
Yeah, that's-
Between the floors?
Yeah.
Between the kitchen and the cafeteria.
But there's a ramp.
There's a ramp, that's really the handicap ramp.
I'd have to let the architect address that. I was, I was under the impression it wouldn't be as dramatic. Is it four feet? I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I brought some boards.
Great. Who state your name?
My name is Willie Zambrano. I'm the architect director for the application, and good afternoon, everyone.
Do you want to move this a little bit?
You need to move down a bit? Maybe you could put them in front of the podium, and somebody could hold it there.
So I believe that the section that you were talking about is here, right?
Yeah.
We actually lowered the building as much as possible, but we do have a water condition that, you know, we got to keep our footings above that water table. So we, we have gone as far as we can, and we try to actually create the height that we would need for the gym. At the same time, we also wanted to bring in some natural light into the space, so it doesn't become some sort of a dungeon down there.
So where, at what level is the water table?
I'm not sure, but it's almost like right above the footings that we would actually have.
You should give us some borings to-
We would.
...indicate where the water table is.
Yeah, for sure. Mr. Schamm, I think he's about 25 feet, but I don't want to incorrectly state anything that I don't have in front of me. We do have borings, and we do know that we're very close to the water table, and we want to be able to maintain that as, as possible, so we don't get any water infiltration in the basement and cause some damage.
Okay, so you dropped it down so you'd get the height for your gym?
Exactly.
But you couldn't go down far enough to-
Exactly.
...get the whole height, but you also want a clear story.
Exactly, and we also wanted to make sure that we don't impose on the height as well. We didn't want to come in and ask for relief on height. We are asking for relief on obstructions above the maximum height.
Which we'll talk about also.
Right.
So, so then, how does this work, though? Because now you, you do have the cellar at two different levels, so the carts that are going to be coming from the kitchen many times a day to the high school?
We, we have revised our plans, and we have created, not only for ADA compliance, but we had, we have created, I think it's on that, on that-
Hello?
We have created, and we had to revise the layout in the cellar because of it, we do have a ramp that wraps around behind this area, so the difference in level and ADA compliance was just right.
Right, okay.
But you're going to bring the food carts on the ADA ramp?
Yes.
Looks like it. Does your client know?
They do know. They do know, but, you know-
I want to consider a little elevator.
Well, that's just it. A lot of restrictions in the area in utilization of, of what we have, but we would consider maybe enlarging the ramp, and maybe just taking away that wonderful storage that the-
Yeah, what is all that, actually, I was curious about that really long storage. Does that like where you keep a zillion basketballs?
You know, for every condition, there's an explanation, okay? So, we don't want to underpin this building, and the structural engineer advised us to actually create a haunch and step down, so this way we don't undermine the existing structure. So we created a space for that. Whether it is enclosed or open, that's up to the school once we actually utilize that space for something else. The fact is, is that you would need a ramp to get there. So, all of these conditions create other problems, so we said, why don't we just utilize it for storage? And there's a great need for that, as, as I understand from the school.
Okay. All right, so then, what was, sorry, just-
I made the comment yesterday about the adjacent side yard.
Yeah.
Adjacent side yard regarding?
The side yard to the adjacent home, you have as, sort of being on the lot line, but according to the survey, there's like a two, almost a three-foot side yard.
It's, it's this adjacent building?
Yes.
I do know that the, I asked one of my staff, and I think it's, it's erroneous either on the survey or on the site plan, but we, we will address that, no matter what.
Okay. So I think one of the things that, and I don't know how coordinated the person who wrote the programmatic needs description is with, with your drawings, but one of the things it said in the programmatic needs is that there, there was, needed to be an adjacency between the play yard and the elementary school rec area, in terms of activities on a rainy day and that kind of stuff. But because of the level change, you actually don't have that kind of adjacency inside. You have a, a big level change between the rec room and the play area, and you have to go, and as far as we could tell, you have to go to the street to get in. go, and as far as we could tell, you have to go to the street to get in. So...
That, that is correct. There's the assembly area that is actually being utilized by the 7th and 8th graders. They would have to actually come out. But overall, the...
I'm sorry. Can I, may I repeat the question?
Yeah. So if you look at the, could you show the floor plan? Because it's easier to understand the actual first floor plan. Yeah. And, and kind of in concert with the section, you'll see the two together. There isn't a way for you to go from the outdoor rec area to the elementary school public assembly room without the students literally going, I guess, to that side yard or around to the front of the building and going in through the entry? Because even, well, let's say they could go up the fire stairs.
May I just...
But the ADA can't go up the fire stairs.
No. It's ADA that has, I mean, for the students themselves, the elementary school uses this outdoor recreation. 7th grade will enter through here and go right into their...
They go up a flight of stairs.
Up a flight of stairs, yes.
Right.
But for ADA, yes, the elevator is here. And that's on grade.
So if you have any disabled students, they are taking the longest hike of any of the students?
Well, they, they go this way.
Yeah. They're taking the longest hike off the, off the school property. How do you feel about that with your 7th and 8th graders? Um, off school property to come into the rec room?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't even think that's treating them equally. I'm not sure that that's allowed. Maybe you could put a lift, but that's a fire stair. I don't, usually Department of Buildings doesn't allow a lift on a fire stair.
Well, okay.
Yeah, yeah, please.
In consideration that it is, it is only half a flight, and I can see that I have enough area there to actually widen that stair and still keep the egress requirement, I would believe that I will be able to actually get that in there.
Okay.
So I, I could, I could see that this could be accomplished.
Okay.
Uh, but you're right. Um, the notion of, of actually keeping, having people come around, it's, it's, it's a problem. The only reason why we actually went ahead and put the entrance there is because it's the prominent entrance that we really needed to have for this high school.
The entrance that's on...
On East 10th and Quentin Road.
Yeah.
It actually faces East 10th.
Right.
And through so many reiterations and design conditions regarding security, egress, the stair and the situation on the stairs and where they will be actually coming in and getting out of the building, um, it just turned out that this was the right design for the building and design, and the prominent entrance for the building.
I understand the reason for an entrance to a high school that's different from, you know, that makes total sense.
That was the main concept.
Yeah. It, some of this came about because in the programmatic needs analysis, it was very clear that you want a relationship between the rec area and the assembly, and you don't have one.
Exactly.
Other than a fire stair, which isn't really...
Exactly. And, and I do believe that we have the space for that, so we should be able to accommodate that.
Okay. And your, and your stairs, I don't know how wide they are, but how many kids are we talking about moving?
We calculated to the amount of kids that was propagated by the code requirements.
Right.
You know, space per kid in a classroom. Um, so all the width of the stairs are predicated on those.
On, on egress?
On egress.
As opposed to kind of the usual flow of...
No. I calculate according to what the space requirements per code. And I calculate the width that is required for, for this type of building.
Okay. So then, uh, let's see. So I think some of this, some of these other questions have to do with the arrangement of the building on the site, so maybe you could talk about this with us. So because one of the requested waivers is that drive-up, we've heard your explanation of why you don't think the drive-up's necessary, but nevertheless, we have to explore why it couldn't be provided or whether it could be provided.
Sure.
Um, so one question I had was, in the programmatic needs analysis, it says you can't put the expansion of the building up against the existing building where you'd essentially just have a, either a longer building or where there, where sort of the box set back further. Um, and, and because one of the comments was you don't want to block the windows to the bat-midrash in the main building, but the windows there are very small on that side.
Yeah.
And there are windows front and back. So I wasn't really sure, and they're small and high, so I wasn't really sure what they're...
I want to, I want to show the section and I also want to show the floor plans, just for comparison, so you can actually see why we did what we did. Um, uh, the floor plan. So, as I explained to you, um, we have made in many instances and we went through many reiterations of it. Exactly how we has the, we have the three options for the as-of-right conditions is exactly what we went through. Um, we had to condition the design per the east and west direction. Um, east being prominent because this is where they put the ark. And the fact that we have windows to actually, um, natural light, as we all know, increases productivity in any class, kind of gender. So, um, the fact that if we were to actually block this area, it would actually create a, not a problem, but it will reduce the amount of natural light into that space. It is a religious lecture hall. Yes?
I just, do you have the floor plan above that where all the classrooms are? Just to show...
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, but what I want to illustrate with that other plan was the fact that, if you notice, both plans are almost identical. If this is predicated on the rabbi imposing these dimensions that he needed to have, not only in the width, but also in the depth. And the height became sort of, I would say, not a choice, but because of his religious room and lecture hall, it imposes that kind of activity. Uh, both Beth Meirach are almost about the same height. Um, this space too, as well.
Right. But what do you mean that the dimensions are the same? Of the bat-midrash, you mean? Or...
Yeah. Beth Meirach, you know, if it would be, if, if we could have done it a little bit wider, he would have loved that. Uh, but if you see these, these scale, it's almost identical, except for a few more feet that we would need.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of depth, it's almost the same.
Sure. If you don't mind, in the existing building, we have a bat-midrash. Most of the windows are, are high, but there are two long longitudinal windows that go down to almost floor level. But above that, there are two floors of classrooms with windows facing the yard also. So that, those would be blocked. That would be a serious problem. Some of those classrooms, their only windows are facing that.
I forgot about that.
No. So that was one, that was the main reason why we didn't put the building against that.
Okay. I think part of it is, we don't have existing floor plans. We have the proposed with what you're doing already. You know, like the whole building modified. We don't have a set of existing drawings showing how the third floor or the fourth floor is currently used. So like, I don't see, and that's the other thing, is it doesn't show windows on the side wall there except for the, the offices.
These here.
Right? So it only, it shows windows front and back, but not on the side.
And there.
So there, there will be that modification for those, those two areas in there and that Beth Meirach on the, on the top floor. Um, I believe that the current existing conditions, and we will, we will submit to you the existing conditions. I think there's a, this whole area, it's, it's one huge room. But we will submit the, the existing conditions.
Okay. So the existing, so the bat-midrash is not that size right now? Which drawing?
Which one, the...
This drawing here. The fourth floor, you said, is an existing bat-midrash?
This is one, this is one...
One whole room.
Today, it's one room, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And our intention is to make these into classrooms. So this, this interior room will be a classroom.
Okay. Okay. Right. And then, um, the next part of the comment really has to do with the play area adjacent to the residential, right? So the way you've got it laid out now, there isn't any protection of the play area to the adjacent residential uses. So it just sort of spills over to the neighbor.
Oh.
And so we were really concerned about that.
Um, yeah. We would create some sort of a buffer in there to make sure that it protects the neighborhood.
Yeah. So, but it needs to be quite a significant one because, as we all know, children, when they play, have very high pitched voices. Um, so to, so it should be something that's very significant and usually landscaping? The fact it should be landscaping?
What about those noise attenuation for something?
It could, it could be that, like we use those noise attenuation walls, but also planting because it's...
Yeah. We could, we could put a buffer with evergreens in there.
Yeah.
Something that really buffers the sound.
And then the other issue that we have, that we observe currently, is how the trash is brought out, where it sits in that side yard, which again is right up, up now, I guess it's adjacent to your own property, but food will be adjacent to a, somebody else's property, and that's no fun. So you need to come up with a better solution for where the trash is stored prior to pickup.
Yeah. You have the service elevator opening up and going right out that side yard, and that's where all the bags are going to go.
So, um...
It doesn't seem appropriate.
And also would recommend giving us a sense of how long the trash is there, because I know in other schools, they've said like, we take it out and it gets picked up like an hour later, or sometimes it sits there for a day. Like I, just maybe a little bit of an operational discussion would be helpful for the board on the truck.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll address it and then you can follow my... Um, part of the, um, pre-submission recommendations was to actually create some sort of a holding stage, and we did that.
Yes.
In the cellar, we would have actually a refrigerated space that would actually go right into the elevator. And then as soon as they come to pick it up, then they'll, then they'll pick it up.
Okay. So that's the question. So how, how would that work? So when do they come to pick up? And is it that sanitation waits until you bring it upstairs or you have to put it out?
Mr. Sharma will explain.
Okay.
Uh, we get to pick up twice weekly, Mondays and Thursdays. And we usually put them in, in large bins. Uh, it's actually a cage. At this, and we worked out with sanitation, they're very happy with it. We just wheel them out and they're open, we just take them and toss the trash in, in the trucks. And these are on rollers, so we're able to wheel them. Our intention was to have a holding pattern in the building, refrigerated, and then a service elevator that would open on grade, we'd be able to wheel those out right before pickup and then bring them back, so they wouldn't be on street.
Okay. So you would wheel them, when you say right before pickup, is pickup always at the same time?
Usually, yes.
So then the people, the caretakers actually in anticipation or they wait till the trucks are there? Like how does, how will that work?
Well, usually it's within the time that they're expected, they take it. But it wouldn't be stored there overnight or for a long period of time at all.
When does that pickup happen?
Mondays and Thursdays.
At what time?
At what time of day? I don't know. But my building manager would probably, you know, schedule the, the garbage delivery, you know, at the same time. He'd bring it to the street. Or he'd be able to, you know, coordinate that.
Okay. I didn't see these, I was there last Wednesday. No, maybe you...
Right.
Yeah, it was Wednesday I was there. And I saw a large number of bags. I didn't see the cages.
We have, there, probably existing condition today, there's a, a caged area within the site.
Oh, a caged area.
Yeah. But we have the cages. So what we're expecting to do in the new proposal is to stage it indoors, not out. We're on these rolling, you know, cages so that we can bring it out. Right now, it's, it's in the same place, more or less, because we have this site already. It's just outdoor. So we're, we're going to keep the delivery and the pickup in the same location, except we're going to have a service elevator that can get straight onto grade that we don't have now.
I just had concerns regarding this adjacent home. It, to me, it's a small side yard.
Yeah.
As I mentioned yesterday, if you were the commercial district buffering, you know, adjoining a residential district, you'd need a 15-foot side yard or...
Right.
Have a play area and you're going to have trash coming out twice a week. It seems like a lot...
Correct.
...of impact on that neighbor.
I understand. May I tell you that the credit for this concept goes to the chair? During our pre-act meeting, it was recommended...
Sorry. The pre-act meeting isn't a public hearing in a...
I understand.
...five commission.
But it was a suggestion that...
You can keep doing that.
Maybe refrigerated storage room, but I'm not sure. She suggested it right now.
No, but I, I should tell you, it, it sounds like a very nice concession, but it was, it was suggested and we thought it was a great idea. Okay.
I mean, you could have the elevator door open, you know, further away from the residence. You could have it actually come out the other way, or, I mean...
Well, that, that's an architectural question.
No, but her...
The orientation and the opening towards two sides that are adjacent to each other becomes problematic, so, um...
Well, so the height of the building adjacent to the structure...
Yeah. We'll, we'll consider rearranging something that will probably buffer something to those, to that effect. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, for sure.
You can't control this. Yeah, yes.
Todd, yeah, I guess, just, the points are noted regarding the trash pickup.
Right.
We'll present a schedule of proposed time arrangement that provides the least disturbance to the adjacent use, but as far as was noted, this is, I believe, an excellent start. The interior refrigerated storage, the rolling crates.
Right.
And with, you know, we don't believe there's any problems now as to providing a better situation for the adjacent. But we'll do a clearer plan and if any tweaks need to be made.
Okay. I, I think that to alleviate a lot of the concerns about the adjacent property owner, because try to imagine yourself being the one who lives next door to a school where there's trash and children.
I do.
Right? You do. So, um, so if that side yard were really heavily landscaped, I mean, thickly landscaped, that would alleviate a lot of the concerns. And also a fence that encloses, obviously you're going to have that on the play area, but on that side yard too, a fence that encloses it and prevents children from running back into the side yard, that's important. Or even, I would, I'd say, this is again, off the top of my head, designing in the air, but if you had, um, the entire planted area running along the entirety of that side yard lot line, and then so the children can't go back beyond that eight-foot point, then again you have planting buffer, maybe one of those acoustical fence buffers, and the inability of kids to get back there and like mess with the trash and mess with the fence. Right?
No problem. We also want to keep the bowls out of their, their property also, so we certainly might have been...
Right. Exactly. I mean, you also have another neighbor to the other side. I, I'm not really sure how you're controlling the kids back there, the one who, the neighbor who already shares a lot line with the lower school, right?
That's, yes.
Oh, that's your building also?
Well, it's, it's owned by, uh, an LLC. The, the, the school is one of the members, so it's a set of...
Well, do they live there or is it an office?
Huh?
Do they live there or is it an office?
It's a residence.
And they're the ones that have the sign, no bicycles on fence.
They were, they were parking the bikes there.
So just because they're on the, the board doesn't mean that they don't A, sell their house, or B, get fed up with kids.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay. And then, uh, let's see, what else we had? So one, I had one question about the heights, because your building, I know that it's an as-of-right height, but the building is taller than the existing school, so you, when you do... So you, when you do a study about neighborhood character, at least do it in sort of a broader sweep to look at what some other buildings are in the area, since you have a lot of institutional buildings in this area, maybe there's more that you could refer to in the study. Okay?
We can definitely do that. We provide some information, we can expand that study, include additional information on that.
Okay, and then in terms of off-site, off-site parking, in the statement of facts, it makes reference to the parking lot, because there's no parking provided here. It makes reference to a parking lot at the girls' school, but is that actually even available for this school? I didn't think so.
It's, it's limited to that site. We never had parking available on this site in 31 years.
Right. But I mean, so your teachers who, who do drive?
There are very, most, most of our teachers actually arrive without cars. There's a, a small number that do, I don't know, they park in the neighborhood. There's some metered parking, I imagine they use. But for the most part, a lot of our teachers who are there for extended hours, they, they usually walk or in the neighborhood, or they take public transportation.
How do you get there?
Do I? I walk every day.
According to the papers, 25% of the staff arrive by cars, and that's 85 spaces.
25% of us, but no, the 350 number is the, that's global, for all the campuses. You don't have a number like that in this building, no.
So it would be helpful if that can be...
We have two campuses, one for girls and boys.
Oh, that wasn't clear.
I wasn't clear. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So because you're the administrator and actually know what's going on at this school, could you please review the materials before they're submitted? Because we spent a lot of time reviewing materials that apparently had little to do with the realities of the school. And we don't like it when we have to do that. So you can correct the numbers, correct the assumptions, all that stuff, so we're reading something that's accurate, all right?
Understood. Guilty as charged.
Yeah, okay, well, you may not have read it, so... So the, in terms of the number of teachers who actually drive, you have actual statistical...
I could produce that for you.
Yeah.
It's not that much. So in the morning hours, I would say it's next to nothing. But in the afternoon hours, we have the secular studies. It is a couple of teachers that, that come by car. But I'll get you a number on that, it's very low.
Okay, you could, if you could give us maybe even a little survey where you hand it out to your teachers and then they hand it back, that would be the most accurate way of...
Right.
...reporting your claim, anyway.
Okay.
Okay. And then in terms of, this is an environmental question, I'm just going through the list, please, anybody else feel free to jump in. The land use map shows there's an auto body shop across Quentin Road from the school, because we have to look at the impact of that on the health of the students. We need to know whether they have permits for spray booths, or whether they're spraying without permits, et cetera.
We did do an air permit search, that is the only site that came back. They did receive a permit for a single spray booth in 1992. The EAS and environmental information will be updated to reflect that.
Okay, so that they have a spray booth permit for one booth doesn't mean they're not effectively operating five booths without permits, kind of thing. So it needs, there needs to be an onsite investigation.
We can take a look regarding that. I believe that that was, it was a client of ours, so we should be able to get that information.
How long ago? Still, okay. All right. Yeah. Go ahead. Okay, so for the special permit findings, could you go into more detail in terms of meeting all the findings, like for instance, for your no sites of adequate size, you just say no vacant lots, but you don't really go into any detail about what it is you need, what you're looking for, and whether or not there are already built sites that might be able to accommodate that.
100%, we'll, we'll expand, I believe we just referenced the 400. We'll expand on both vacant and existing buildings. We'll go a little bit beyond the 400 feet. We'll also add in information about redundancy with the fact, the benefits of being next to the existing school and services that are shared between the schools. So we'll expand the first finding, for sure.
Okay. And then, just because I'm going through my notes, we talked about the bus arrival/departure, and we talked about the need for parking, and whether the need for parking will increase as a result of moving, of the redistribution of the school and the increase in the size of the school for high school students, right? So we need that information updated on the studies, okay? And support for the assumptions. Okay?
Definitely.
So we need, and so when you described how the buses arrive and all that, if that could be put into writing and submitted, okay?
Okay. We expect, we'll, we'll do a survey of the staff commuters for what we're projecting rather than what's existing, I imagine, that's what you want?
Right.
Okay.
For both, both existing and projected.
Existing and projected, fine.
Okay. And then the drawings need to be amended? There's, the drawings need to be amended to show the, where the bikes and scooters are gonna park, because there's no information. Maybe they're that really long thing.
We'll, we'll certainly provide it.
Okay. And then, oh, street trees. Why aren't you providing all the street trees? You don't have any curb cuts.
I believe that in the C8 district, you don't need the street trees under zoning code.
Okay, well, we're not...
But for sure...
...under zoning now.
No, believe me, I, I'm all for trees in the city, so we have to provide them, for sure.
Yeah.
I believe that there's existing trees around the site.
Yes. But we'll, we'll provide some more, too.
No, I mean, you should...
If there's existing trees, you could just show them, because there might be existing trees that you're not gonna take them.
Okay, so you show the existing trees, but to the extent that there's space to add trees according to standard residential district regulations, you should provide them, because...
For sure.
Right, because it's a good thing. Okay.
No.
So, because one of the reasons that I say it, maybe, again, you didn't read the statement of facts or another statement, it says, "Two trees or something will be provided, and the other three will obtain a waiver." So everybody's supposed to read each other's stuff.
The FTS charges.
Lot of different trees. Just, just so you, I'm sure there's, there's trees, street trees, full grown ones, all around the building.
Okay, so may, maybe so, but I read the statement that says, "The rest will be provided off-site."
Yeah. I think that you need your street, like just I mean, you need your street tree plant requirement with them in there. Show us how.
Right, exactly. Okay. Okay, so you're gonna show on the drawings, the buffering of the neighbor. Oh, you need to show on the drawings, all the bulkheads, the mechanical systems, to the extent you can guess what they are, and the fencing. You, you have fencing on the roof, right? You have to show the fencing on the roof and elevation. There's a number of reasons for that. One is that if you file your drawings and then you show them, DOT will send you back here for an amendment. You don't wanna do that.
Definitely.
Okay. And then?
Would you mention that you tried to have the permit, the permit, please show how you're screening it, because that...
Sure.
Yes. Let's see. You asked?
I think my question's...
Okay. Survey shows two-foot-nine side yard to plan shows zero, we're gonna fix that, right?
Well, the bus pickup drop, programmatically, applicant has responded, and I...
Yeah, so...
Since it seems you've indicated it's not feasible to provide it, and you're gonna provide the calculation, I would like, I'll wait for that.
But actually, you've indicated it's not feasible, it's a large extent to do with how the students and the buses interact. Could you write that down, so we can understand why that would be a problem? You know, because for instance, we, we know you have play equipment in your current play yard, but like, why couldn't that be over here? And then the buses pass, because they only need 12 feet to pass, you know, that kind of thing. Explain why and write it.
I do have one question. It was mentioned that during morning period, there is a lot more drop-off, parents drop-off kids than the buses. I just want to make sure there, it's all, the space for the parents to drop off and pick up is that same curb cut, and it's not resulting in double parking?
Not curb cut, curbs, drive to the curb.
Sorry, pull to the curb.
Yeah, the entire curb is, you know, standing, but it's clear for, you know, with parent couples.
So is...
So the, go ahead.
They don't interfere with any of the other traffic, you know, in both.
So the parents drop off also at that no standing zone, or they just kinda whatever?
Not many bring the cars, a lot of them, 7:30 drop off, because it's early. They, they bring, some of them bring their students, they're older, and they just drop them and leave. They're coming for a 7:30 arrival.
So if, so if most of the parents who are dropping the, dropping or dropping older kids, is that what you said?
Usually, there are some that bring the younger ones, but mostly the drop-offs for the older kids, and it's on that no standing curb.
Okay, so...
There's no bus at the time.
So once there's a high school there, the main entrance to the high school will be in front of where it's no standing zone.
It's, it's intended to go on the corner facing East 10th Street, though.
Right. So then, but that would be kind of the most convenient place for parents to be doing drop-off.
I would imagine. I mean, it would make sense to ask DOT to, to give us part of that East 10th Street curb.
Right.
It would make sense. But it's a high school, it's not an elementary.
Right, okay. So do you have someone who manages the drop-offs and the buses? You know, for instance, the buses, you say they work by color, so all the kids know which bus.
Sure.
Isn't there like a bus monitor, make sure the kids get on the right bus?
We do have people responsible for arrival and dismissal, yes.
Okay, so could there be also a monitor who handles how the parents, what the parents do when they're dropping off, so it's not chaos, which we're used to seeing chaos where the drop-offs are located?
That's, it's a very difficult thing to, to do, because they come at any time at will, and to have someone just waiting for an occasional parent to drop, instead of an arrival time that's usually scheduled, and when the buses arrive. But it's not that, we don't have that many parents who come in the morning and, and drop off, nor pickup.
Again, according to the papers, there's 120 students arrive by car.
Yeah.
All right, I have to look at that, 120 arrive by car, but that's at all hours, and that's seventh and eighth grades.
But that's a large number.
All right.
So if you can break that by hour, and how that correlates with the bus drop-off, and, and how that is coordinated, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So when I'm hearing in what we've read versus what you say, that some of the materials may have been provided based on like standard statistical analysis about a school, and the fact that you have the girls' school down the street, there may be sort of parents dropping the kids off at the girls' school, and then the, then the boys walk up to their school, or something like that. So maybe there's a way for you to, again, figure out more specifically in the next couple of weeks of school, what's going on? School's still in session, right? So in the next couple of weeks of school, to figure out what kind of drop-off situation you have. Like get a monitor out there that'd actually do a car count.
Okay.
On a super busy day, on your classic busiest, craziest day, which may be every day, but... Okay? All right, I think that, does that cover it for everybody? Okay, are there any speakers on this?
Can I?
Yes?
We just have four more.
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Can I?
On the question that was asked to Todd earlier, regarding the Ocean Parkway zoning district and the fact that we have .75 FARs, because under section 113-571, and it's depicted on our plans, part of that lot that is on the R5 is actually on the sub-district.
Right.
And for community facility, it really takes you over to, to take, take the FAR of the R4-1. It's on the Article 7, and that's why we had put it in there.
I, I, I got, I followed your reasoning to that point, and then where I found the .75 was related to community facilities was sleeping accommodations.
Uh-huh.
This is not.
I thought that under the sub-district for the special Ocean Parkway district is for all community facilities, not just for sleeping accommodations.
So I think actually there was, there was, did they make that change to the text yet? There was, remember there was a moment where there was a mistake in the text?
Yeah, the, the DOT was my...
No, no, not about DOT, but DOT, DOT is in present when Mr. Simper knows reviewing the materials, right?
No, I, I just wanna know from my own, from my own understanding, because the way I read it is community facilities, it doesn't really specifically say for sleeping accommodations. So that's why we, we took it...
Are you reviewing in your book or online?
In the sub-district.
No, we were reviewing online.
Online. So you should take a look at this again, because we looked at it and we didn't get there, so...
We'll clarify, so we also wanna provide additional detail regarding the R5 C8 grade town, above and beyond, so that...
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. All right, so there are no speakers on this?
No, gentleman here.
Oh, yes, there is. Okay, sorry. Couldn't see you.
Who said your name for the record? I'm gonna have three minutes.
My name is Ronald Towel, T-A-W-I-L. I've been a lifelong resident of Brooklyn, having lived in the Graves and Midwood neighborhoods all of my years. I've had the privilege of receiving my entire education through the public education system of the City of New York, having begun at PS 215, continuing on to Booty Junior High School, then to Brooklyn Tech, Brooklyn College, and finally my architecture degree from the City College of New York. I don't practice architecture now, I'm a businessman, but I am also a community volunteer. As a result of the good fortune that the City of New York has afforded me, I've always tried to give back. As such, in addition to serving in various community-based organizations, I am a board member of Community Board 15, where I serve as vice-chair and co-chair of the Zoning and Variance Committee. In fact, today I speak not only on my behalf, but also on behalf of Teresa Scavo, the Chair President of Community Board 15, who is unable to be here due to a scheduling conflict. For almost 40 years, the Yeshiva Teter Torah has continued to provide premier parochial yeshiva education to its students. In addition, the yeshiva prides itself in delivering a robust and well-rounded secular studies curriculum, that is the standard to which many other yeshivas aspire. I have known the rabbis and virtually all of their lay leaders for all of these years. They are people of integrity who have always done what is in the very best interest of their students and of their parents. And now, through 100% of its own financial resources, without an iota of government support assistance, the yeshiva has a compelling need to expand its physical plant. It should be noted that the proposed expansion is to properly accommodate the overcrowded situation that the yeshiva has been faced with for far too many years. The yeshiva has been exemplary neighbor for almost 40 years. It pledges to continue to do so, beginning with its desire not to request any more space than what it determines to be the minimum needs to accommodate its current student enrollment. Perhaps it is this quality along with other factors that enabled Community Board 15 to pass a unanimous vote in favor of this application. Our respective requests that the Honorable Commissioners will see fit to approve the application that is currently under consideration, it will not only be a meaningful investment in their students' academic futures, but it will also be a significant investment in the community and its future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? Okay, so, oh, there is, okay.
Hi, my name is Moshe Mizrahi. I am a former student alumni of the school. I'm a parent and a neighbor. In 2006, I got married and moved on to the, an apartment on East 10th Street on Quentin Road, and I was a neighbor of the school. And I have to say, I was looking for a house to buy on that block, because I enjoyed being next to the school. They were great neighbors. I wasn't fortunate enough to find in that block, but I found two blocks over on East 8th, where still in close proximity of the school. I'm constantly passed by the school, and the school is run very, very nicely. My children go to the school. I'm here today because I want my children to have the same school, if not better than I had. The lab that we had when I was in school, I saw over the years, became into a classroom. The library that I had when I was in school got diminished to a tiny little room, which I'm not even sure if we could call a library today. Resource rooms, different play areas, the, the school is overcrowded. And I, my child goes to that school, I have children going there, and we want to see the school grow to accommodate the younger generation. And we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Yes, please come.
Hi, thank you for your time today. Actually, me and my fellow, my name is Mauro Sapti. Actually, me and the other fellow, we were in class together. And there are four distinctions that bring me here today. One is I'm an alumni, alumni of the school, my wife is an alumni of the school, my children, I'm a proud parent of the school, and I'm a happy neighbor of the school. And this school is a necessity, and is a great asset to our community. And in regards to, I'm there a lot of times by dismissal. Actually, they do an excellent job, quick, swift, efficient. Buses come, kids get off very safely, and I'm actually very proud and confident with that. I sincerely request that you approve this application today.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? No, that's cool. All right. So, you have a list of things?
I do have a list.
I hope there were people taking notes.
Nice, complete list. Everybody had multiple lists, and we'll review, and...
Okay, and you'll review each other, reviewing each other.
Yes.
Right.
All right, submission.
All right, so, we need some time for this?
I'm speaking to everybody as far as the timing for submission. Since some of the items are predicated on other items, we could be flexible to board's calendar, but maybe submission date four weeks from today?
What's the...
Four, five is needed.
Last week of July was like... That would be, I think, fine.
Think fine?
Yes, there's, there's the variance on the upper Manhattan, but I don't know that that's coming back. Then there's the, then there's Eric's case, St. John's, that's a little gnarly, but...
What about the 18th? Is that any better? Otherwise, the 8th?
18 is better.
Okay, let's do, so can we...
Yeah, yeah.
18, go for the 18.